Okay, Tuesday appointed hour, so I think we'll call a meeting to order. First item on the agenda of course is approval of minutes from the two previous meetings being June twenty-two and June twenty-nine. We'll give mission members just a minute or so to look over those if you have them with you. Uh, and then we'll, if there are any questions or or uh corrections, uh, we'll take care of that and then ask for approval. I'm sure you did all, read all of those word for word at home, didn't you?
I skimmed all of them, yeah.
At home.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion as to the disposition of the June twenty-two and June twenty-nine meeting minutes.
Approve.
Move to approve?
Then like that move to approves.
No moves, I don't know.
Any second.
To approve, any second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion has carried. Moving on to public comments, uh, on anything, uh, of course, except the agenda item on business tonight, uh, I don't know that there's any member of the public here looks like to comment on anything else, but this is the opportunity if anybody would care to.
You can comment on any subject? Zoning wise?
Any, any subject pertaining to planning commission, I would suppose. It won't do you any good this.
This be, right, may not do any good, this will be a FYI, okay? Retired railroad that I am, I can tell you one thing, it, it seems to concern me about the allowing to go towards these container homes. Those things are blow over speed is fifty-five miles an hour on the wind. They would stop the trains at fifty, when the wind speed got to be fifty-five miles an hour. So I don't know how well this guy is securing his stuff. Or if there's ever a plan to stack it. But if it is just FYI, fifty-five miles an hour is blow over speed on that stuff. Then it becomes like a sale or a piece of paper or whatever, and they will, you know, just barrel roll, you know, if they happen to be out in the open and not blocked, you know, by other trees and buildings and stuff, but just out in the open, yeah, they will roll. Just wanted to let you guys know that. I know that decision had already been decided, but that was just a, for information.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll move on to the agenda item, uh, case number twenty-two-three dash zero-seven. You've all had the access to copy of that application. It is for, uh, for term rental use at two oh five North Lincoln. Thing in addition to the application, Mr. Nurse Lady that we need to be aware of?
Uh, no, we've had, we have one comment. Are you Mr. Allen?
Yep, yep.
And he said he would be here, so that was the comment we had received.
And I don't see the opportunity. Give them an opportunity if they, if they were, okay? Moving on to public comment on that application, and we've got a couple of the neighbors here, I'm sure, so anything you guys want to say about the, the application?
You want me to first? You so? Okay, I can go. You want, I state my name?
Yep, state your name for the record.
Michael Allen, I live at two twelve East First, directly next door to the property in question, two oh five Lincoln. Uh, my first and biggest, uh, issue with the whole thing, uh, becoming a bed and breakfast is, uh, in my thirteen years of living there, uh, it's come to my attention that my sewer line and that house are tied together at some point. I've had tree roots, uh, become an issue somewhere along the line and have over the years had star plumbing and a couple of others, you know, in rotation. Some remove tree roots and they've had to go upwards of a hundred foot or better from his cleanout, because I don't have an outside cleanout. They've used his cleanout to clean, clean the roots out and freedom drum, uh, plumbing issues with both my house and his house.
Not the right one.
Two oh five.
So.
Wrong side of the street?
That's South Lincoln.
Oh, that's South Lincoln. That did.
Uh, you're one, one block over. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the house, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, there you are, yeah.
Yep, that's me on the corner house. At some point, uh, the sewer line runs between the two houses and his cleanout is at the back end of that house you see to the left. I mean, the, looking at his house on the left-hand side, the cleanout is directly behind that and appears to run straight towards the alleyway, another house down, and that's where the sewer line ties in. I don't know how far back these two lines run together or exactly where. I can tell you for a fact, though, I know from when I put my fence in, I hit part of my sewer line headed towards my fence line, and it was going straight towards his backyard, which would make sense that my line ties in somewhere near to his house. Uh, this was all done back before days had, uh, any routing maps or anything like that. Uh, I've asked back when Joe, uh, was still working in the plumbing department, water, that, uh, he said, no, there's, there's no maps on how any of this is routed. So short of having it scoped out, I wouldn't know exactly. Other than I do know, at some point, they come together. So what concerns me is if this was a bed and breakfast, we could have things like feminine projects getting flushed again, you know, who knows? You know, and this could add to the trouble I've got with sewer, sewer line issues or something like that, you know? Because this is probably a regular small four-inch line is all it is, uh, going to, uh, to the city main, wherever it ties in over there at the alley. So that was one of the other, and I guess my biggest issue I had with, uh, more traffic in that house than just a two, two-person dwelling. It's two-bedroom house as it is, as it stands now, so. Uh, also, my gas line, my gas meter is in their backyard of all places. Why? I don't know, but it is. So, I don't, I don't think I should have my gas line in his backyard if he's got all these other people maybe coming in, you know? Uh, the other thing is that concerns me is parking being an issue around there. Single, single driveway, a garage, but if it's, you know, a bigger vehicle or an RV type situation, you know, they may wind up having to park on the street. Uh, it's a pretty busy street Lincoln anyway. Through there, people use it like a throughway just to cut across, you know, and I've got, you know, I've got people that run that yield sign all the time, so it's just a matter of time before we have a big wreck there anyway. Uh, that was another issue I had, um, and I was wondering about, uh, what type of restrictions would the city of Hillsborough be already looking at? If they were to go that way, allowing it, what kind of restrictions would you guys have, you know? Because, uh, lately in the news in the last month or so, city of Wichita, this has all come up for them down there. Their Airbnb, and, and so they're putting the brakes on the whole thing, trying to take a look at it because these Airbnbs, you got kids going all over the country renting these things just to have parties. You know, they run them for the weekend, want to come in, it's not their place, they don't care. They want to have parties, so I don't know if you guys have given any consideration to, if this was allowed, would you have, uh, some kind of way of keeping a handle on the clientele that would you? You know, how, how, how could you, you know, uh, buy them? And I really would like to see it just as it's zoned out residential, you know, and, and left like that instead of going as, uh, as a short-term rental property for Airbnb or a bed and breakfast, as they say, you know? So, um, like you said, the sewer, and, uh, I also wonder, uh, oh, here's the other thing too, uh, bugs and rots. Okay, we, we start writing this thing out to who knows what. This is how you get bedbugs and stuff like that. I don't need all this stuff right next door to me. You come in, these are, this is how bedbugs get in these hotels, less clean people. You know, they come in for night or two, they're, bring them in in their luggage and whatever else. So that's just another issue I was thinking about, and I was wondering how this would affect property value and my taxes if this happened. You know, it's going up enough as it is on its own. I don't need it to go up any higher if, if that was the case with, uh, becoming a bed and breakfast. And say the county, uh, thought to increase their tax because it was, uh, more expensive because they were making money on the house. So, that was just my points. Uh, like I said, bottom line for me, for Mike Allen, I'd say no.
Maybe a point of clarification, Mr. Matt, uh, sewer service lines would be the property owner's responsibility and, uh, gas lines would be dealing with the gas company, is that correct?
Correct, correct on both, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of situations where, uh, service lines, uh, are tied together for properties. It creates issues with neighbors most of the time. Uh, we, we can prevent that now, but in this case, it's after the fact, it's done. I'm going to assume several decades ago. Um, so yeah, and we wouldn't have any mapping on that. We would just have mains, so any service lines, that would be something like that, but yeah, it would be that, and then the gas company would be responsible for the gas services.
I've asked, uh, uh, Atmos about moving the meter to my yard. You know, I never did like the idea of the meter being in, in their backyard. If I needed in an emergency to go run, shut my gas off for some reason, a leak in my house, you know, or whatever, I didn't want to have to run through my neighbor's yard in the middle of the night or something.
Sure.
You know, he, he's liable to think, uh, he's got a burglar running across the yard, you know? So, I was told that they would move it, but I've asked them on two different occasions and nothing's ever happened. But I was told that no cost to me, they would move the meter to my, to my yard.
Well, gradually they're moving them up next to the house, yes.
I think that's where they ought to be, you know, at a minimum in, in my front yard where the man can read it, you know, clearly with no problem, instead of, you know, having to get into your backyard to read a meter.
Is anyone residing in the house now currently, or is it just empty?
No, it's empty at the moment.
It was up for sale. While you could see the sign.
It went to auction.
Went to auction, okay.
McCurdy, uh, had an auction at that, I'm pretty sure that's how they got rid of it. So.
So whoever purchased it then is just, I mean, they never did live in it or use it as a rental?
Nope. It's like they live outside too.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
As for a point of clarification on some, some of the other things, um, the rest, what, what we're looking at here is a conditional use permit, so it wouldn't change the underlying zoning. It would still remain R two, um, so it wouldn't be that. Uh, as far as how the county looks at it as a property, I don't think that they really look at it that way, not to, not to my knowledge. I mean, I think they would still probably view it as a residential property, so I don't know, I can't say for sure, though, I'm not an appraiser, I don't know how that process works on that side with those, but, um, yeah, so that.
We got changed to commercial, then Hillsboro.
McPherson.
McPherson, when we had our guest house.
Okay. So I guess that could potentially.
It could potentially be.
Looked at.
Or taxed.
Taxed, it's a commercial instance.
Just that property or?
Just that property because it's being used for a commercial purpose, then they look at the purpose, so. Commercial use, not commercial zoning.
Right, right.
Commercial use. But that's up to the county.
Yeah, that's the appraiser. That's a whole other thing.
I've seen the county boys out back sizing it up with their little judgescope, you know, looking at it and everything, so I know they've been out to, uh, work it up.
They, yes.
Who knows, uh, you know, I haven't called them to see what kind of kind of rating they're giving in place.
I would suspect that, given how it is now, it's probably still residential now. If it changes uses and becomes solely a commercial business, then yeah, they probably will, but I'm not sure how, I would assume it's probably still residential right now.
Here, here's the other thing, like I said, uh, I worry about, you know, if they, they were to use it as bed and breakfast and rented it to a younger generation, I worry about noise and stuff like that if they were there having, having some sort of party. And who else really is coming to Hillsborough and needs a, needs a bed and breakfast in the middle of town over there? Uh, most, in my idea, uh, you can see all the sights and attractions here in about an hour. You know, that you wouldn't want to spend the weekend here, go sightseeing. So that's, uh, I don't see really the need for a bed and breakfast right there, and we got a, a nice hotel right up there on, on the other side of town, right there, up front on our.
How many bed and breakfasts do we have roughly in Hillsborough?
This, well, uh, this would be six, so I think there's five.
Five?
Yeah. That are, okay, I should step back, that are approved, are approved and known, there could be more, um, we don't actually surf those sites to check, but from what I understand, most of the people, at least in talking with Mona High, who has the one over here, most of the people who rent these are attached to Tabor in some way, they're coming in for student parents, parents, yeah, that kind of thing, um, that's typical what we would see, I guess, with that, but.
That would be awesome. If I knew that was the clientele you were getting all the time, I wouldn't have a problem with that because I know what you're looking at. You're looking at parents coming in to watch their kid graduate, and they're here for a couple of days and that's it. You know, that, but it's, it's the other issue, and I don't know that even if you guys tried, is there a way of restricting?
It usually is restricted through the app because you have to have a good rating usually before a lot of people will rent to you. So if you're unknown, you have to provide information about your family and your background before they will even approve you. I tried to do that in Denver and we've never done it before. And so that was an issue. They weren't sure they wanted us because then it was just me and my husband. So usually the app, they, you get to rate the land for the, the, the property and the landlord, and then they give you a rate, and so if you were to trash the place, they would give you a poor rating, you would, I mean, you, you wouldn't be able to continue down the road doing that.
Right.
That would be contingent upon the owner doing that, though. Is that correct or is that a requirement?
I think you're supposed to, after everything, you were supposed to rate them and they're supposed to rate you. I've only stayed in, I, I've paid for one. Well, actually, my son paid for one, uh, dur- because he got married during COVID and there really weren't hotels and stuff, and it was married at a venue, and so they rented a house. Um, so they didn't have to drive back and forth for all of them. And I paid, but it was in his name, and it was a very good experience. And then the other one, my other son did it, but we went to Florida and we stayed in above somebody's garage in Florida also during COVID, and it was, it was a good experience for us as well as, I mean, like, we were in a very expensive place for somebody's wedding, and we only had to pay like fifty dollars a night splitting it with our son. So, I mean, I think that they can be really good if they're run correctly and you have the right people needing to stay there. I don't really see Hillsborough as a party destination.
No.
Um, you know, we're not at the county lake or anything, so the likelihood of somebody wanting to party in your neighborhood.
But, but if we, you know, if we don't have some sort of restriction or, or times to keep that from happening, who's to say it, it, it could?
Well, I think there's noise complaints, you know, like if, if that happens, I mean, it does sometimes happen and people call the police for like noise complaints and.
That would be our only mechanism for, for managing that. It would be like any other homeowner, um, it would fall under the just the regular UPOC kind of stuff, public event.
He's a holderman, and.
Oh, I, I saw.
And I don't know if he would rent, uh.
That's what I was going to say, the burden really is on the landlord to, uh, to make sure they get your meters, I mean, it, it's in their best interest to not.
Sure.
I would have every confidence they'll do everything they can.
Well, and I would think a short-term rental, um, would be in some ways better because you have people coming, I mean, if you have some people move in that were horrible people, and it was a rental, you know, I mean, that would be, that would be the thing.
And I, I've thought of that, you know, we're talking about somebody that's going to be gone in two days or three days.
And it's not going to probably rent it out the whole three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. Like for our house, when the college leaves, I feel like I have three months of pure bliss in a private park, you know, and then I put up with the rest, the other nine months.
Now they're building another building right behind your house over there at where they knocked that place down.
Parking lot? The Cedar's going to be parking lot.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, but, but I mean, I think it can be managed. I mean, I think, you know, I, I, from what you said, my biggest concern would be the sewer line.
Yeah.
Um, shared and, and especially if the owner of the home doesn't live in town or isn't able to manage that, that would be the only concern.
Well, it depends on how big a problem it is. Either landlord could put in a new sewer line and, and eliminate that problem for both.
Or the city could do it for us. And come in there and run, run from where after it typed the keys in, and that trunk line.
It's yours out to the main.
Yep, that's how that works, sorry.
And that's happened to a lot, like I think originally our house, all three of the houses on our block were all tied together. And then my understanding is when they got enough money, everybody broke off, but it, I mean.
And see, in the past, uh, both of the other, uh, tenants or occupants, I should say, uh, we've split the bill every time it's been, needs been cleaned out, you know? Call up the plumber, you know, he pays half, I pay half when possible, or he pays this time, I pay the next time, and we've, we've done it like that. But, uh, if there's not a city restriction on it, if it was used for commercial use, like a, a B and B, that it would need to be a larger line than what it is. You know, that's, that's the other thing I would be.
Isn't any restriction for that?
I think that's a good.
Not for that, actually.
I personally don't have patience for sewer problems. If it causes me trouble, I put in a new line and not, not have to worry about it, but that's just my viewpoint.
So I guess I have a question. Sorry, are we still at public?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait.
I, I've said my piece.
Anything you care to say?
I agree though. I live across the street east and, uh, I really appreciate the climate of the neighborhood and would like to support that fully. So.
Saying by that, what then? You don't want it approved, is that what you're saying, or?
Oh, pro or on, um, or against, um?
Or, well, maybe you're not saying, I'm not trying to put words.
No, no, I understand what you're trying to say. Um, I was curious about the one that Mona and Dick Hot, Dick, no, Davey Hot, yeah. And I did talk with, uh, Chris Glansor a little bit about it just to see what he, what his experience was with it. And he said it seemed to be pretty quiet, no big, no big issue. So, back to, I, Mr. Styles, the number of that we have in town, uh, I think it probably could be okay. Or, I'm just saying, it's, it's a, it's a nice climate, we, we, no one would want their climate around their place to go nuts. I mean, however they do, um, but like you said, it's a little bit, there's a little bit of insurance. The fact that you need to have it in good shape to have it appealing to your, your clientele.
It's, yeah, it's kind of symbiotic that way. If it, if it falls into some repair, people aren't going to want to stay there.
Thank you. Open up the floor then for questions or comments from anybody on a matter that these two gentlemen have raised or, or not.
I guess the one thing I would wonder is if the homeowner is aware that it is a shared sewer. You know, and since they're not here tonight, there isn't. That would be the thing that it would.
Well, to be honest, Kay, I don't know that this, this issue, that, that's a homeowner issue. And so, as far as, I agree with you, I think that needs to be addressed, but I don't know that that's really our purview. Address that, I guess, I mean, because you, you're talking about the, the conditional use of it and not so much the physical condition of the property and, and the sewer line, the gas lines and other issues that probably needs to be resolved, it's just, you know, that's a little outside of what we, what this group can do, so. But I agree with you, I think they should be aware of that or made aware of that if they not. It needs to be addressed.
Obviously, the applications for a B and B, is there a particular reason that we know why they're going that route as opposed to rent?
On the application, it says short-term rental or with an Airbnb. So are we doing a short-term rental or are we doing Airbnb with this application? If you flip on the first side, it says short-term rental. But then the second side says Airbnb.
I, I think it, I think they're meaning it to be kind of thing. I, I think it's more semantics than anything. It's a short-term rental, the thinking it's an Airbnb or you, was it you, you are BO?
Well, with, verbo, verbo. I presume they meant short-term rental listed with the Airbnb company.
Or, I think that's what it means.
Or, or VRBO, vacation rental by owner, which you can get your renters any way you want to.
So then if they're listed with those two things, then that comes into play, what you were saying, that those companies would actually have
Oh, yeah.
standards that are there.
Yeah, sure. In, in our zoning, there's no difference between a quote, short-term rental and a B and B.
There's no difference.
It's almost the same thing. As a short-term rental, could you, can you rent out to multiple independent people, like it's a two-bedroom thing, rent it out to two people completely separate, a boarding house?
Yeah, as long, well, I think there's a unit restriction on a boarding house. It has to be over a certain number of units within it. And that's how we, that's how we designate hotels as well, so I, I imagine you could, um, in this situation, but I, I don't know that, I don't know if that's feasible or. But yeah, I don't know that it addresses that for short-term rental. It's a fair question. I, I don't know that it addresses that specifically.
So when we say short-term rental, and I should maybe know this, but is there a maximum number of days that one person or one party can stay?
Thirty days or twenty-eight, twenty-eight days, I think that's.
Okay.
Have we had any issues thus far in the last couple of years, at least with any of the B and Bs as far as complaints from neighbors or people around those?
I've not feel there's any complaints with that, um. If we were going to get a complaint, it would probably be with Mona and Davies because it's a duplex. Uh, and Celia Gross lives right next door and she's not shy, um. So if there was an issue, and then they have an adjoining, I mean, it's
Yeah.
They have a common hallway that they got to go in and out of, so. You know, I think, I think most people, the clientele is probably the Tabor-related pretty.
Or family origin, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Origin or, you know, something.
Yeah, I, I think you mentioned tourism in here isn't like a destination per se, but we do have, you know, college things, the arts and crafts fair, that kind of stuff that draws people in town, so. You know, I can tell you that the, the hotel is very busy, surprisingly. And so, you know, there, there must be a need for this or a market, I guess.
That's, I was wondering if anybody's talked to the motel and if these things have any impact on them.
I, they don't, you know, based on our collection on transient guest tax, no, I don't think that's a huge deal for them. Uh, I think they're doing pretty well, but I think if they, if you ask them, they'd tell you, yeah, we need to limit that, because it could, it's competition, it could cut into our business.
Do we, do we get transit sales talent something?
Not on these, no.
Um, I've raised the question before on the short-term rental versus affordable housing for long-term residents. Has that been addressed with city council and evade a community or, or mind?
We have not, well, yes, we've dressed it, uh, addressed it with them. Every time one of these comes up, I bring that up. Uh, we're actually looking at our housing, we did a housing needs assessment, and we'll be presenting that in, uh, first meeting October, which would be when this comes along too, so uh, I think that there is a need for, that we need to think about that. We may want to look at limiting the number or maybe doing a moratorium until we can figure out What we wanna do for that strategy, because that is an issue. With with the affordable rentals in town. I'm not saying that you should take that into consider, well, you could take it into consideration with this one, but. We may look at at making a limit on future applications until we come up with something.
The. The driving need for the short-term rentals that, as I understand it, have been like. The doctors that come up just for a weekend, just cover the weekend kind of thing, and parents, grandparents coming in for. Whether sporting events or. Whatever, the college. And some transient workers, like when they were working on the. The windmills and and that kind of stuff. And it doesn't take too many of those to make it more profitable. To rent a house on a short-term basis than it does full-time. And so my concern is that we're gonna have more and more people wanting to go with short-term rentals because it makes more money. And if you got somebody bad, they don't stick around. Not as apt to get a tenant that, you know, gets in a fight with a spouse and puts a hole in a wall or something. So the the maintenance on them is actually usually simpler and easier. So, but my concern is that we're losing affordable housing, and if the city doesn't have that, we're not gonna.
I don't, would I kinda like to know what the definition of affordable housing is, cause when I see the rents on a lot of the houses, it doesn't seem very affordable. To me, and you know, I'm speaking from a public housing standpoint, where my residence pay income-based rent. But, you know, when I, when I see what even birchwood apartments are going for, when I'm seeing that on Facebook, and I think they just slap paint on the front of those things.
Well, yeah.
And and it just seems like there's plenty of landlords that are asking a lot of money for houses that aren't in great shape.
And I I concur with that and, but. Uh, to me, affordable housing. Has a couple of different aspects. One is you want, you want less expensive housing um without. Having houses that had no quality to them. But on the other hand, if people are looking for a house and. Half of them in town are B and Bs and the other half, they're gonna inflict the prices because houses aren't available, there's no competition. And that could be why. Prices are are higher.
Be what's driving up the rental prices.
Yes.
But as a homeowner, I would prefer to live next to somebody who's wanting to keep their house looking nice. Somebody who's, you know. My experience from from rentals, and I don't know what Kansas is, but my experience is they're nice when people move in and they're trashed when people move out. And it's really hard to, when somebody doesn't own it um on a long-term.
Right.
Rental.
They don't, they normally, I don't wanna. Category, but they they normally don't take as good of care if it's not their own.
And that's, that's one thing that is different about Wichita and here. A lot of the. The B and Bs in Wichita that they've got are owned by people that are out of state. It's strictly an investment thing.
And they probably have a management company.
Yeah, where here it's mostly, I don't know, as far as I know, it's all local people. Own the home, so there is a difference in how you keep an eye on what's going on.
My, I'd take on the uh need for affordable housing or the lack of affordable housing. Is that that's caused more by the number of unoccupied houses we have in town than it is by the number of houses that have. Gone over to being, becoming Airbnb's. We've got the house right next door to the one we're talking about here. My wife and I own. Uh, had a fire in there quite a few years ago and we're kinda on the road to fixing it up. Somebody came along and. Decided they wanted a project, so we ended up selling it rather than fixing it, and that's been four or five years ago and the house is still vacant. Uh, and there are others.
I think there's a, you know, a couple others that are vacant on Cedar and.
This is actually, you're getting a sneak peek of our housing needs assessment right here. This is one of the pages out of it, and we talked about that, so. Average home value ninety-five, average gross rent in town is six hundred and seventy-eight bucks, so that's. Affordable, maybe not so much, but. Um, total housing units, the what Ken is talking about here, we have a hundred and eighty-one units vacant in town. It's about sixteen percent of the total housing units, so.
I've seen more for sale signs than I've seen in a while lately.
Well, and part of that is turnover, cause when they do the survey, you know, if it's being sold, it could be vacant at the time, but you know, parts of it are. In situation or uh we see a lot with people who. Uh, parents maybe are are deceased or have moved into nursing care and the kids own it and it's empty, they keep it up, but they're not really using it. And then the house right next to me is vacant for three years. Three years.
Yeah, I think that affordable is a tough one, because the house we sold, my parents want the house I grew up in, three twelve South Adams. It's on Zillow, one of those estimate things. Since we sold it, probably my sister and I sold it maybe five or so years ago, the price has nearly doubled. I'm going like, there's no way I'd pay that. I mean, it's a decent house, don't get me wrong, but a hundred and twenty thousand? No way, it's not affordable in this community. How many people make money like that?
Right.
Now, they're not, the people living in it aren't selling it, but I'm just saying, if they were, I don't see how you get that price.
Right.
So I don't know how realistic that is either.
Going off of the bargain.
That scared me about the young person trying to find a place to live.
Especially at eight percent interest days.
Well, and even if you're not a young person, if you're like me and your house is paid for and you're thinking you should move, then you look at what's available in town. And you go, yeah, I really don't wanna pay any of any of these prices when what I have is paid for.
But look what you get for your house then.
California.
Are we at a point where we're ready to draw things together and eventually come to a decision?
You know, this is the first time we've had a discussion with a neighbor. Who's directly opposing or questioning. Making something Airbnb.
Well, silly grossed it.
Okay, she did, but she kind of. She softened.
She came around.
Came around before, all said and done, I mean, yeah, you're right, she didn't.
No, nobody's been.
Nobody's been.
You've been fine.
It's not outlined by any stretch, you're welcome comments, so. I just wonder what your thoughts are after hearing this discussion.
You know, I I like the family atmosphere that that end of town where I live is, you know, it it. And like Craig was saying, it's quiet, you know. Uh, even with the school going through there twice a day with changing class, you know. It it's still a quiet part of town. I'd like to keep it like that, and I think uh keeping it as single-family dwelling. Adds to that, you know, uh. You're talking about the housing, this, this guy could have, could have bought it or not buy it, and somebody else eventually would have. Bought it, moved in with a family, I'm sure, you know, cause that's where it's been. Prior to this last seller. He wanted out very quickly, cause he found him a woman in Wichita. So it was cut bait and run, and that's, that's what happened. And then these people picked it up, say, hey, we can make this thing pay for itself in, you know, four or five years. Hey, it's a great idea, you know, so that's where this idea I'm sure came from. Instead of working or leaving it on the market like you would tend to do, trying to attract uh. You know, a family, cause this is some of the, the last of the houses that aren't a hundred thousand dollars or more. You know, to buy, that, like you said, younger people could afford. You know, uh, I know when I moved to town, I was divorced a couple of times and that, that hurt me as far as what I could afford at the time. And so I was able to buy a house at under seventy thousand dollars, which is where my house was, you know, so. Since then, we've had all the inflation and the price increases and everything, but this is still a house that's, you know, uh, on the market. Actually appraising probably for eighty thousand dollars, eighty-five maybe. You know, uh, I know that's what they say, my property taxes say my, my place is worth. I wouldn't pay that for my house, but you know. I mean, it's, so it's some of the last of the under a hundred thousand dollar homes in town. You know, that I think uh I'd rather see a young family in there.
So how long was this place for sale?
Uh, first time, it was for sale right out of year probably. When the last guy bought it before this, the man that's got it now. And uh right out about a year, I think, and then this guy that uh just recently sold it. Lived in it for six months maybe, and then like I said, he got hooked up in Wichita, off he went, so. And it was sell quickly, whatever I can get for it, I guess, and, cause they tried selling it. Then that didn't work. After a couple of months of trying to sell it on the market, then all of a sudden we're gonna auction. And they went to auction route with it, cause the McCurdy does uh.
So it wasn't just overnight, it was people.
That was, yeah, that was.
People had a chance to buy it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you had had young, you know.
People were were looking, they could have bought it.
Right, if and, you know, like you were discussing uh. Whatever the interest rate was at the time, it was probably at five or six percent and going up, you know. At the time, so, but I'd like to see it stay single-family instead of uh short-term rental, you know.
Matt, going back to what you said about, you know, you, the city, the council may look into um. Moratorium on these types of permits, conditional uses. If we approve this tonight. We have the control of determining how long we're gonna issue this permit for, correct?
You.
What have we issued the?
There haven't been any time constraints on them.
There haven't been.
And so once it's issued, there's not an option of rescinding that.
It's not actually issued till the council approves it, right?
I don't think you could until there was a violation of the conditional use.
So there was a change in use, you could, but not really. I mean, it would be pretty well locked in if they wanted to continue doing it.
We could do a conditional use that says while this owner owns it, and change of ownership, the conditional use goes away.
Is that how it is with the other?
Once you issue a conditional use, you really can't take it back away.
I think we talked about this last time, but he could make it a full-term rental too, correct? If you want, if supply and demand dictates.
If this changed, yeah, he could do that. Um, then then you'd be in a situation where you could say, well, the conditional use does no longer applies. Because you're not using it for that, you rented it long-term.
I think there, most places, I don't know if Will's Hillsborough has it, but most places have a. Ordinance somewhere that says if you don't use the conditional use for that purpose for X amount of time.
Yeah, there's, there's an expiration. I'd have to look it up.
Cause I know we've got that on our shed over on Jade from the county.
That is correct. Yeah, if you, so to answer your question, I guess, if you wanted to. If you wanted to put a condition on it, you could recommend that to the city council and that could be moved forward that way. And I, you know, I talk about a moratorium, the council has not. Made any comment about that. That may be a recommendation we bring forward after we look at the housing assessment, do you have a need for. For those type of houses, and this seems to fit in that, but.
Well, I guess the question would be is if it, if if it was for, if if going forward, if this is a concern. And a person would put. A limit on it as far as if they had to reapply or what that looked like, if there were problems in the neighborhood. Then can it be addressed that way?
Be that way.
I mean, like you might, if it's approved, you would maybe be pleasantly surprised, like Miss Gross was.
What if you guys were to write it in like maybe a year at a time, you know, type deal, you know, to be reviewed in a year? Or something like that, that way, if there was issues, you know, I can scream and let you guys know. And then you can say at the end of that year, it, nope, that's it, we done.
Does the city make any money off of the applications?
Uh, fifty dollars.
Probably doesn't pay for their being.
It actually does not pay for the publication. Probably needs to be adjusted, honestly.
Yeah, maybe it should be.
I don't know, yeah, it's not a money, not a moneymaker, I can tell you that.
Okay, where are we at? Anybody ready to propose action?
Guess my thought is, and I'm not ready to make a motion, I just wanna hear what, but that um. If we did approve this, that we would put some type of a time restrict restraint on it. For more than one reason, just as as um Gay mentioned, as well as. You know, the city's now doing these assessments, and if they would choose in the future. That, you know, they'd really prefer not to have, you know, they'd like these types of houses to be available, then. We have that option when it comes, when this conditional use permit um expires. Those are my thoughts.
Even if a time limit is not, I mean, like like the conditional use permits that are in place now. If there were issues that came up. On an Airbnb, uh, noise and problems with in the neighborhood. Is there a mechanism for rescinding that conditional use permit for that reason?
City council could act to rescind it. Never done one of those, I don't know, but I think there probably would be some way to do that. I've never done that. That would be a city attorney question.
So for housing, are we looking, who's looking for housing, or is it people who have one child? Cause if you only have two bedrooms.
Right, yeah.
I I'm like, who's, who's looking for housing? Is it bigger families, smaller families, single people, what?
All the above.
I get calls from all kinds.
But they're looking to rent, they're not looking to buy. Okay.
Like a lot of people buy on my route are retired people moving to town.
Okay.
Got a lot of that.
I didn't know what the market, who, who it was.
We have a pretty big need for uh workers that are in industrial facilities. And they're not.
They're looking to stay.
Yeah, they would love to be in town. I've got a list that, we did a survey two years ago, we had three hundred and, three hundred people said they would love to come to town if they could find a place. So a lot of them are gonna be in that.
Gay, I had a call from a gentleman who's actually looking to relocate closer to a VA hospital. But doesn't wanna live in this, in Wichita, okay, you know, wants to live in a small community because they think it's safe. Yeah.
This is an interesting situation, cause I respect the the owner of the residents to be able to do in reason what they wanna do. At the same time, you have a neighbor that's concerned about the use of it. Though maybe what you're suggesting is an option would be all bad in this case.
Yeah.
That could get as more benefits than not. Nothing wrong with trying it.
Right.
It'd be hard to say no when we've approved everything else so far on B and Bs.
Well, I kinda have that same.
At the same time, this is, you know, if you have someone concerned, this would be a way to help person.
And the other thing that I keep thinking is every time we have this discussion, Gary brings up, well, what is this doing to our rentals?
Yeah.
And it's like every time and we all, we approve it, but then we all kinda feel bad because yes, it is, but then what's the alternative? I mean.
Well, uh, I mean, if you own, you're setting out. Three miles, five miles, five miles from town, and own a house in town. And you can't rent it out a short-term rental, what are you gonna do with it? You're gonna rent it out as a long-term rental. Or are you gonna sell it?
Or you sell it, yeah.
You know, if you bought it cheap enough at an auction, you could sell it and make a profit. Somebody else maybe gets a cheaper house too. If he rents it out and he rents it out long-term, it's a construction, I mean.
And then the long-term would be that they would be buying groceries and.
I do think we need to push the conversation forward on it, instead of just every time there's a request for B and B. Actually have a conversation with the council or something about what.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna have it. That's common, yeah, cause it's. That's common, yeah, cause it's.
We're starting to get a lot of these.
Yeah, well, you know, there, there needs to be some mechanism for this, that's.
I think that needs to be broadcast little, instead of putting it on Mr. Litwiler.
Right.
You know, tell people ahead of time.
Or we're gonna evaluate our policy on these, or we're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've done that, well, that's what we did with container homes, for example. You know, we're like, okay, we're gonna have a moratorium until we figure out how to handle these, so, be similar type situation.
I move, we approve the conditional use permit with the one year.
One year time period.
Time period. Be renewed if everything goes well. Can that be renewed automatically, or does that have to come?
It has to come back through. We could waive the fee for them.
I was gonna ask.
So that's not a problem there.
As an extension of this, it would wait.
You can do that.
So what is it?
Send me a letter in case I have any issue. I, you, you will get informed, yeah, we'll do it just like we did.
You specify a time period.
One year.
Any issues either.
We need a second to the motion.
I'll second, I'll second.
What was that?
Just clarifying that the motion is to approve the permit with a one year time period, which can be renewed. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be fair.
We didn't, we do that with Barkman for the storage? The same type of thing?
Yep.
Hey, further discussion before we call for a vote?
Joe had a second?
No.
You seconded it?
Yeah, I seconded it, okay. She got me, I think.
Okay.
Well, yeah, Danielle's right on it.
Then why was she snoring?
Okay, one last chance for a comment or question before we go. All in favor, raise a hand, please. All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried unanimously, thank you. City administrators report.
Just have two things to talk about, um.
Thank you.
Um, the extraterritorial zoning issue that we had with the county in their, uh, notification process. That went through and they have, they, the planning commission, I think, and the. The administrator for that, I think we're a little confused with what we suggested. Uh, and they, they were not prepared to, to get into that conversation at that time. So they didn't do anything with that and they moved forward with their notification, which is, I kind of expected that. Uh, so if we want to pursue the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, I don't think that they would have a problem with it, but. They, they, they weren't giving us a thumbs up or thumbs down on it. Uh, they just were very much not prepared to talk about that, I guess, um, so if we wanna do that, it's a process. We, we can start that if we wanna do it. Right now, what's gonna be in place is that notification, so, which is fine too, but. Um, I think maybe we oughta look at pursuing the extraterritorial, um. And so, you know, I can get that process started with. It is a process and see if we can move forward with that, but I just wanna let you know that they did not, they did not. Eh, accept our request. Not that they could anyway, we'd still have to go through the process. I was just really looking for them to say, yeah, we would be happy to give that to you. They were befuddled by it, um.
To put it politely.
Yeah. That's, you know, that's what it is, uh, and then the other thing was container homes, we're still waiting on the permit application from them. We sent it back after we had our two meetings on it and suggested that they meet these things and. Ben and I have talked to them multiple different times about, you know, what, what we expect from this set of plans, what did it actually reflect? Uh, we told them what the deadlines were because we have to publish this and so there's some things with that. Uh, they still have not brought it back, um, each month when it comes close to the deadline, I tell them, hey, it's the deadline. If you wanna submit this, I have to have it by this day to get it out. Still haven't seen. Came to, come to find out, they've had similar conversations in the city of Marion and the city of Harrington, so. We're not alone and they are, I think, looking for somebody who's just kinda, kinda rubber stamp and go, but. I could be wrong on that, maybe, maybe not, but.
Or we're delaying their progress.
Correct. Right, Eddie, this, they were ready to roll and we were killing them, um.
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready, ready to move. But yeah, so that, we have not received that and I, I don't anticipate seeing it anytime soon. I will continually notify them at the end of each month when I need that information for the next meeting. That is where we are at.
That's all you can do.
That's what we can do.
I think you're being fine to do that.
For being generous.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah.
Okay, one more opportunity, anything that's not on the agenda? Anybody wants to?
On the container thing, um, they paid one application fee, I assume. Um, can you give them a deadline and if they don't meet it, then that application.
They're gonna have to pay, yeah, they're gonna have to pay another one, because we've gotta resend all that, all that stuff back out, so we're gonna make them pay it again.
You're gonna change the price?
We are, well, we are talking about changing our, where our publications go to and that would eliminate some of that price, but. There's still the letters we have to mail and everything, so.
Maybe we should ask our guest if she learned anything tonight.
If you don't know, this is Crystal Rickert and she's my, our, my, uh, our accounts payable and payroll clerk. And Crystal will be helping and taking on a lot of planning commission work, but helping with that. And so, just wanted, yeah, to come and. Get an idea of, of what's happening in these meetings, what it looks like before we begin turning things over. She will be great, I'm confident, confident. Ken will razz you, but it will be okay.
You realize, I'm sure, as far as setting minutes, the bar is set unreasonably high already.
At least when she's awake, I mean, you know.